Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shatsbury Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shatsbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, August 7th, 2017. Does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Uh, next up, approval of minutes. Uh, minutes were circulated... Were they not?
Yes.
Yes, they were. Why aren't they in my folder? Oh, they're there. No, that's treasure. I know they were in here.
I know.
That's because I'm on the wrong date. Okay, we have minutes for our meeting on July 17th that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any additions or corrections to the minutes for July 17th?
None.
All in favor of approving the minutes for July 17th as circulated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved by a vote of 4-0-0, 5-0-0.
You have to abstain.
I should abstain, yes. I will abstain, thank you, because I was not there. So that would be a vote of 4-0-1. And I just, oh, do you mind jotting a few notes for us? Because Dave's not here to, uh, to do that. Uh, the only thing that really has to get recorded are, are motions and attendance. And the attendance is the Select Board and cameraman Mike. What's your last name?
Cutler.
And a motion was made, uh, by Tony, seconded by Art, to approve the minutes for July 17th, and that was approved by a vote of 4-0-1. And then we had minutes circulated for our special meeting on July 31st. Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any additions or corrections to the minutes for July 31st? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes for July 31st are approved, as, uh, the minutes for July 31st as circulated are approved by a vote of 5-0-0. Okay, warrants. We have one warrant, a check warrant number four, and the amount of $16,093.23.
Uh, I move.
Motion to approve from Art?
Yeah.
Seconded by Ken?
Yeah. Warrant check number eight, what?
Check warrant number four. The amount is $16,093.23. Uh, items over $1,000 here are $7,000 to Arlington Rescue Squad, $4,200 to Murch Snow for delinquent taxes collected, and $2,700 to Sycamore Land Scape for cemetery mowing. Any more discussion on check warrant number four?
Arlington Rescue Squad for...
$7,000, that would be our, uh, community appropriation.
Didn't realize they were that close, okay? Alright.
Um, I'm not sure why that one in particular is being, uh, Dave?
We don't have the one for the Bennington.
No.
Uh, Bennington Rescue Squad, recall, we, uh, we moved that into the budget line item.
That's right.
And I guess we'll pay that when they ask for it. They have?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I imagine that will be showing up on a warrant pretty soon.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, um... I don't recall the normal sequence of how these are paid. I think they're usually paid toward the end of the fiscal year, so this, which we just closed at the end of July, so...
Okay.
Why we're just seeing that one and not, uh... Not any of the others, of which there were 26.
Right, sure.
I'm not sure. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number four, say aye.
Aye.
Check warrant number four, and the amount of $16,093.23 is approved by a vote of 5-0-0. Our agenda this evening, we're gonna have to skip over some items because our town administrator, who fills us in on a lot of these details, uh, is not here tonight. His wife was, uh, had a emergency health problem today, so he's taking care of her. Um, I just want to mention by way of announcements that I will be on travel on August 21st, our next meeting. The meeting will still happen.
I won't be here.
You won't be here either?
No.
Okay. It's worth noting. Um, the only thing I know that was gonna happen then was, um, Forrest wanted to give us a six-month update on Bennington Rescue Squad activities. Do we want to, if we wait on that, it's probably gonna be mid-September, because the meeting after the 21st is, uh, Labor Day timeframe, which means we'll probably have a partial meeting to pay bills unless, uh, the Board wants to move it to another day and have a full meeting. But typically what we've been doing lately around holidays is, uh, is on Thursday or Friday before, just paying bills and skipping on ahead. So, uh, what do you think, Tony? Should we... I told Forrest that, you know, uh, it's an informational report from him. He can present it to the Board, we can watch it on YouTube afterward.
Well, if, you know, there's no rush, other than he wants to get it in before we prepare budget. So we've got the fall.
Okay. Alright.
So let's pick a date and...
I'll write back to him and tell him that we'll just do that in September.
Yeah.
It's only, it's just...
It's just an update.
He's priming himself for budget.
Uh, treasurer's report. Our treasurer is off playing the violin somewhere, and she sent me an email with the report. "We still have plenty of cash in the bank, but I'll need to make a draw on the line of credit fairly soon, depending on the size of the next couple of, uh, next couple of general warrants. I can turn that around in a day. We're all set up with the paperwork." So, recall, we borrowed money in lieu of taxes, and she's been holding off on actually needing it. Uh, it looks like she is gonna need it soon. "Dave and I, Dave and Joan and I need to meet to discuss a few general entries we have to make before we can put a fork in fiscal 2017. We have good sense of where we ended up, which was, as I've observed recently, amazingly on budget, both for revenue and expenses. But the exact dollar figure for change in fund balances needs some tweaking. Dave will probably have more to say about this, but I'm happy to report that the garage bond sale apparently went through without a hitch. I haven't heard exactly for sure, but it sounded like we got 3.4%, which is what we budgeted for, so..." And she goes on to say, "Since I have an official grand list, which I'm close to, which I'm told is close to, to happening, I can set the tax rate and start work on producing tax bills. I've been getting a lot of calls from people who were confused by a letter they got from the state of Vermont. In the vast majority of cases, the letter is simply confirmation that the taxpayer's HI-144 form declaring homestead income was processed, household income was processed, and that the state payment will be reflected in the tax bill, which, which, when it is produced. It is not a notice that there's a check waiting for the taxpayer at Cole Hall. It's also not a notice that further action is required, but of course, if people need further clarification or assistance, they know where and when to find me." And she also sent our, uh, her report on tax flow, our, uh, cash flow and fund balances. Do we wanna see those, or are we satisfied with that as a treasurer's report?
It's always balanced, so... It's always balanced.
Yeah. Ed, you know, seeing you there reminds me that, uh, I skipped right over public comments, 'cause we forgot to put it in the agenda. So, at this point, I will open the, the floor to public comments. Welcome, Ed Corey.
I did, uh, one of the, uh, and I did give a copy to the town administrator. Uh, Shatsburg should wait another year before trying to build the new town highway garage at the North Road site. With all the damage the storm have caused to the town roads and the town office, we should fix what we have and not do the garage this year.
That's all they got. Alright, thank you for your comment. So, um, we got the treasurer's report. We don't have a road foreman or... Dave, does anybody have any comments they wanna make about the roads at this point? I'll just comment that I do like the, the ditching that I've seen, uh, on Daniel's road. It looks like it's a, it's a road that's prepared to shed water now. I'd like to see us get, uh, get a lot more of that done.
The comment I made to you about pushing back the brush, cutting back the brush and all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
It's gotta be a priority of ours over the next years, as they're just keep growing in. Hiring the guy just to mow twice a year on just one swath in is just not gonna cut the brush and all that sort of stuff, so...
Yeah, uh, I was wondering about that, too. Is, is that something that can be done with, uh, saws? As opposed to picking the mower up and shoving it into the brush? Because that sure makes an ugly mess when they do that.
Some of it can, Tim, but it's law. They do it that way.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, um, January or February job, when it starts thawing.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not sitting in the garage drinking coffee. You know, that's, that's about the way that would go. I did a search on the internet today, and I found, I've been looking occasionally, for a addition called a bushad, that you could put on that Volvo excavator. And I did find one. And the guy is supposed to get back to me with a price, but I've gotta give back to him with what that machine is, the hydraulic pressure, cylinder limber, all that. Because if you could get one of them for that, it would be ideal for doing just what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm. Well, I've, I've seen that done, and when it was done on my property, I was really, didn't like it, because it looks like you set a grenade off in, in a tree.
Well, it's not gonna be pretty. I mean...
Yeah.
There's really no way you get around that.
I mean, but we're just doing that to keep limbs from encroaching on the road, so that cars can pass right.
It's not something you've gotta do every year. You can do the one pass this year, and then maybe next year, do two, or, you know, and then if you had a machine like that for, for, uh, backup, you could go around and do intersections and do it when you didn't have other work to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I would much rather see us do it as, as you say, as a winter, uh, you know...
Oh, it's always been that way.
...a winter day project and do it in spots, rather than just wholesale shoving the mower up into the trees. That, like I say, it makes for a really ugly sight.
It's like getting the haircut. It'll go bad.
Yeah, but...
The aesthetic value's diminished at that point. It's really, it's an ugly sight.
Yeah, it really is.
I mean, we've got a chipper anyway, to clean that stuff up.
Yeah, I mean, to clear the brush out, but it's the, it's the, you know, the trunks, you know, the four-inch trunks that are exploded that look really, really tacky.
Feetrans has a, a whole crew that trunks there and does that with the pole saws and the chipper and, uh...
Doesn't look like a war zone.
Alright, alright, I, I agree with it, the way it looks.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we've got, you know, when the stuff starts hitting the cars, then we go in and trim it back. But I would rather not see us just start mowing trees the way we mow grass. Alright, that takes us to item eight, town insurance report from Dave Newell. David, welcome.
Thank you, Tim.
Is it that time again?
It is.
Didn't we just buy insurance every day?
Twelve months is getting shorter, right? It used to be longer.
Seems like we buy insurance from you every year.
Well, we're trying to fool ya, because we're charging you now before the year is up. Hope David's wife's okay.
Yeah, she's, uh, apparently in a lot of pain with, well, I shouldn't talk on TV about her health problem, but...
I reviewed this with him before, anyway, but... Hopefully give you a snapshot of what's going on. I'll keep it brief and simple. Let me just flip to the very last page of this one. Can review the numbers with you quickly. And you see on there the current 17, 18, and last year. If you take out the bond, which you've paid for three years on that, which we did in 15, and that's the bond on the, on the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the group accident coverage was just the same. The numbers are up about 5%. The reason for that is two things. One is the town expenditures are up about 3%, which does affect the liability premiums for activity. Activities that go on in the town and a few vehicle changes. And the other two are a slight increase in the program's rates for all insurance. I think it is still a good value for the town. If you take a look on here, you'll see the various sections of the coverage that we have. And I'll explain them to you in a moment. Sorry, I've misspelled "public." It says "Poo Bill officials," but we know it's public officials.
Mm-hmm.
Law enforcement, for vehicles, among other things here. I'll give you some detail on, on these coverages here in a moment. Feel free to drop me any kind of a question also.
So, am I, to understand that the umbrella, Exesque, that's just, uh, make sure it doesn't go above anything?
Well, it's an excess liability policy we have for you. We have a $5 million umbrella for the town, which means that that is excess over your general liability and the auto liability. So your total limit actually per claim is $6 million, one on the, on what we call the underlying policies, and another five from the umbrella. And that gives you excess over almost everything, and I'll show you how that works. So it does give the town a pretty good buffer if something really significant happens, right?
I'm just noticing for the first time, workman's compensation.
Yeah.
$21,000, that's a... 40% of our total insurance bill.
Yeah, um, I'll, but we'll review that here. The good news for the town is that your premium mod is pretty good. It's .888 now, below one. That's good. You haven't had a claim in three years. That is good. Uh, the, uh, you have a knock on the plastic, right?
Yeah.
Your comp rates are also driven by other towns' experience and the, and the rates that are approved by the state for the insurance carriers. So it, it's a big number, and you're right, it's, it's over a third. And Art Whitman can vouch for the excitement involved in workers' comp at Whitman's Feed Store, but...
I'm wondering, we're talking about being short a driver for this winter and hiring it done. Do we have to have workman's comp on a contracted snowplow driver that drives a, his own truck, and he's under contract with us?
Right. Answer would be no to that. You know, a subcontractor, not an employee, is not covered under your workers' comp. And David would do a good job in making sure that the individual's got general liability and auto liability, right? And you pay him a $10.99, yeah, that's fine. But why don't we just, go ahead, Art.
So this is an estimate based on...
And why don't we take a look at that? It's, uh, it'll be leafing from the back. See the number of these pages. Just the fourth from the back. Workers' comp is at the top. Bill there?
Yeah.
You'll see there, the experience mod, which I mentioned, is now .88. It has gone down. It was 10 points higher, 11 points higher, .99 the last two years. The insurer actually is giving the town an 18% discount on top of that, which is because of your good experience, and that is a plus. But if you see the payrolls, it's based on all these classifications here. And I could actually give David, which I have at the office, the breakdown of the premium for each of these classes that you see on here. The bulk of it is the highway department, as you would call it, which is the first one there, street and road maintenance. It's for most of your payroll, isn't that is, uh, the highest rate on here? Otherwise, the rest of it describes the rest of the town employees' job descriptions, the water department, people in the office, uh, the park is mowing generally. We do insure the volunteer firemen, and that number is, does not represent their payroll, because they are volunteers. There's a per-head arbitrary payroll assigned to them, and that's where that $93.47 has arrived at, the number of times, the number of firefighters that we have. Animal controls, animal control, the snow removal is wintertime, uh, maintenance, plowing, that type of thing. And the rate is about, uh, about half or a little more than the summertime rate, so that's why we break that out. So it's to the town's advantage to separate that payroll like that. Uh, which is why we have it, have it here. Garbage are the folks who run the landfill, and the, um, otherwise municipals, everybody else. David and the treasurer do look at these payrolls. We'll have an audit soon on this, which will go backwards 12 months, and we'll be sure that they're right.
Yeah, we have had some changes in staffing.
Yeah.
Recently.
And if indeed, and we had pretty close to these same numbers on the policy that just expired. If your payroll was more than what, or as I said, less than what we had on there, you will get, the town will get a refund for last year.
When you say payroll, is that strictly wages? Uh, how does, uh, health insurance and...
It's not included in that.
Okay, good enough.
It's gross wages, that's it. And if it's overtime, it's two-thirds of that. So it's not the whole overtime number, if we have overtime with employees. All the other fringes are not involved.
Okay, so you're saying that the details of payroll will be supplied to you by David and Melanie?
Right, and we'll do an audit, and we'll see how, and if, in fact, if our estimates are a little bit high, the town will get a refund for the 16, 17 term.
So I'm looking here, this is for a policy that apparently started in July?
Right, July 1 is the town's renewal, right, on hold.
Okay, so we're, we're behind schedule?
Right. Meaning regarding...
Well, this is, uh, this is August 1, and we'll...
Yeah, we, we bound the coverage for you, so the town is insured.
Yeah, but we should've done this a while back?
Yeah, well, we, um, we've got, we always do it around the, the 1st of July.
Around the 1st of July?
Plus or minus a little bit, and we're, um...
Okay. I take it we can make changes if needed?
Yeah, anytime.
Right, sure.
So if you just wanna flip to the first page. This is the town's property coverage. And you see there, we have a blanket limit of almost $3.091. And that one limit applies to any one of the town's properties, building or contents, if you have a property claim. And the statement of values is a document that looks like this. It's a one pager, which has all of the town properties on here, and that's how we developed the blanket on this. And I did review this with David, and I believe we have everything here, which includes all the major town buildings, more memorial outside, et cetera, you can read down there.
School is, uh, has got, has its own?
That's right. The school properties. Not here, but as you, of course, we do insure Cole Hall and the, both firehouses and the current town garage, among other things. So that's how we come up with that.
Well, if we start building that garage.
Right.
I assume that the insurance will get adjusted as, as we start building it?
Right, uh, that's a brand-new building.
Yeah.
Will be. And what we do for you on that is we write a builder's risk for the town, which, um, is a construction-type policy. It's gonna cover building materials that are stored there, that sort of thing, cover the structure as it goes up.
Okay.
Uh, and that's relatively simple for us to do that.
Yeah. That kinda happens as part of the, the mortgage, right?
Right, so we're prepared to do that whenever the, you get started. What's the timing on that? Maybe you don't know yet.
Um, you know, most of it's gonna happen, uh, past July 1 of 18.
Alright.
So, you know, we'll start piling, piling lumber up before that, but, you know, construction will probably happen after, uh, July of next year, so it'll be on the next...
I'll connect with David on that. We can get you a quote on that, so you know what you're looking after that, and the values and so on, so you can work that out of the budget, which should be helpful for you.
I need to know all for budget purposes. I need to know that number for budget purposes.
Right, yeah, then I'll, I can get that pretty quickly for you. Um, we have, in addition, the town has $150,000 of extra expense coverage, business income. It's unlikely the town would lose income, because people are still gonna pay their taxes if you have a property claim, but the $150 would be used for moving the town offices somewhere else if you had a claim in here, paying rent, moving expenses, that type of thing, so we can keep, keep things moving. Uh, that's what that's for. We have a flood and earthquake coverage, pretty high deductible on that of $50,000. On the flood, 25, and the earthquake. The, none of the town's properties are in Zone A in the flood zone, which is helpful. And the ordinance and law coverage means that if you did have a, sorry for that misspelling, too, if you did have a claim in one of the buildings, and you're now rebuilding, and the building codes, and this, this happens almost all the time, are now different, and you have to upgrade what, what was there before. That's, we have another $500,000 available for, for that.
Almost like a cost of living, you know, I guess?
Right, and, and building codes change all the time, as you know, and almost all the time, you have to do something that you didn't have before, when you're, especially with public buildings. So that's the property...
We're not covered for war, are we?
Uh, that's true, or terrorism. We're hoping for the best.
Nuclear missile from North Korea, we're not covered for that.
That's true. Uh, we're hoping that Kim Young, whatever his name is, is not aiming at us.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, he's just crazy enough to attack the United States and hit Vermont.
Yeah.
Hit Shatsburg.
I think he's after Rutland, is what I think he's...
Target of interest.
Right. A little town further, we include equipment breakdown on all the buildings, which is the heating and air conditioning systems, mechanicals, and so on, for sudden accidental breakdown. That's covered. And we do have an equipment schedule, which is the second one from the end, and I'll review this with David, and also our highway foreman. This, uh, insurance covers these items as they're being used off-site, anywhere, of course. And we take a look at these every year to be sure these numbers... We take a look at these every year to be sure these numbers are about what their value really is and adjust them if we have to.
Computer equipment and computer media?
Yeah, they're big numbers in the town's, what we have for computers, I know we're close to that, but the municipal program includes that automatically, so there's not an extra charge for that. So we do have plenty of coverage for the town's computer system, which is the hardware, and the media's the software. Includes power surge, damage if you had that.
Okay.
We have a small amount of virus coverage, $25,000, which I don't have in the schedule here, but that's covered as well.
Accidental classroom chemical spills?
Yeah, that's not for you folks, but that's, yeah, this little property indoors in which I showed you, it's got a laundry list of stuff on there, some of which don't apply to the town. They do apply to schools, but I yellowed in the three of them that...
Virus and hacking?
Yeah, that's included at $25,000.
Hey, Dave.
Yep.
You got on the equipment list here.
Right.
You got a 1970 track excavator caterpillar. That, if that, I don't know. That should be, is that an excavator? Because our excavator was a Volvo.
We have that particular one on the auto schedule, which I'll show you, the Volvo.
Okay.
So this one, I assume the town still owns this piece of equipment?
Uh, I see it somewhere.
Right.
Oh, that's it. That's the track loader.
That's the track loader.
Track loader.
And we can change that so it makes sense. It's called a track loader?
Yeah.
All right.
That's what he was, we're looking at the property details. Here it's got ordinance of law coverage C for $500,000. You mentioned another one.
Same $500.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
I put that on the schedule, but it's the same number.
Okay. That is, building was changed, and we have to have $500,000 more insulation in Coal Hall.
That sort of thing.
After the meteor hit, it needed to be rebuilt.
Right.
For coverage for meteor?
Yes.
It's not the apocalypse?
Yeah. When Skylab was up there, big scare on that, but it came down. Didn't hit us, was good. We do include the fire trucks. Again, I'm still on page one. We have over a million on the trucks. As well as $200,000 for the firemen's other equipment that's on the trucks and used at the fires and so on in here. If you flip to the third page. We do have this crime insurance package for the town. We have $300,000 blanket coverage on all of the town employees. We have a separate bond also for the treasurer, which you'll see later, which you're required to have. This covers all the other town employees and protects the town for employee dishonesty. And we also have those other coverages there for theft of cash, $20,000 inside the office, $10,000 on the way to the bank outside. That includes all the locations, town locations. And we have some coverage for forgery and funds transfer fraud, computer fraud, which thankfully we've never had to experience, which are covered for that if a claim arises from that, counterfeit currency.
Yeah, we bumped that up last year.
Next one is the general liability. Your basic limit is a million per occurrence, which you see here. Aggregate means that on this underlying policy, if you hit 3 million of claims in a policy year, unlikely that would happen, but if you had that, then this one would be exhausted. You'd be into your umbrella after that, which, as we mentioned, is a 5 million umbrella. We include a bunch of stuff in here, employee benefit liability is included, so if somehow the town makes an error in administering one of the benefit plans, we can help you with that. For getting to add on a new child or something that goes wrong with adding somebody off of disability and all the fringes that you have for the town, cover the town's errors and omissions for that. It includes professional liability for the firemen, sex abuse and molestation is included for the town. We do exclude pollution for the landfill site, but included otherwise, pollution liability. Asbestos is excluded liability. The failure to supply, we of course have the water system that the town is responsible for, and thankfully never had an issue, but that failure to supply which causes an issue on the other end for the users is not covered.
Would that be a failure to manage?
Well, you're probably right, since I guess the bulk of the water starts there and comes our way, right? And our department's in charge of our own hydrant system area, so yes, primarily that would be their responsibility. The town's liability is based on a number of things, including the road mileage. We have 86 miles of water to company payroll. On the vacant buildings on North Road, I was just down there last week, are they both gone now?
Is the yellow one gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so we'll take that off. We had liability coverage for you on those structures.
Liability coverage.
Right, not for property insurance.
I was going to say, we didn't need to be insuring a building that we were going to tear down.
And we didn't. Isn't that great? Very bottom of this page, we do have law enforcement liability for the constables. If a claim arose regarding their activities, we protect the town for that. There's a $2,500 deductible on that. Next page is the vehicles. I did review these with David, and I believe are accurate here. For most of them, we have comprehensive collision with a 250 deductible, comprehensive 500 on the collision. Some of the older ones, we just have liability on. So if you're looking at this schedule here, and it's blank where it says comp deductible and collision deductible, we just have liability on those, or in the case of the fire trucks, we have separate insurance on them, which we just discussed. And the Volvo can is on here, 2013.
All right, I guess that was on the...
Yeah, right. And then it continues on the next page. Again, the town's 5 million limit of umbrella applies as well as the underlying limit of a million here. And we do have, which hopefully is reasonably accurate, the drivers there on the next page, as you can see.
George Chandler hasn't worked here for quite a while.
Yeah, we lost a couple of employees in the last couple of weeks.
So we'll have to check with Dave.
Yeah, I'll take with Dave on that.
Yes, please.
We cover the town for what we call non-owned liability, so if the employees are driving on town business, their own vehicles, have an accident, the town gets sued for that, we protect the town for that. We also offer excess liability for the employees for that. The max on physical damage is 2 million, which hopefully would work okay with what we have in either one of the firehouses that's on the vehicles there. And the next page is the umbrella, which I discussed. It's 5 million limit, and what it gives you is excess coverage over all the stuff that you see here. So auto liability, the general liability, employer's liability, which is part of your workers' comp, a public official's liability, which protects all of you folks for your role as selectmen and all the other appointed and elected officials of the town. Employment practices is included as well, which is the issue of wrongful termination and discrimination in hiring, that sort of thing, fair to promote sexual harassment in the workplace, we cover you for all that stuff as well, and law enforcement. So the umbrella gives you excess over all those coverages.
Can we just go back to vehicles? I didn't see anything for collision, or is that...
Yeah, it is on there, Art. The collision is in this far right-hand column.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And when you see the deductible, that's the ones we're covering them for.
All right, so if we...
Right, and we have the fire vehicle separate.
Yep, I'm sorry.
All right, that's fine. The next one, work comp, we did review that. Third from the end, we do, as I mentioned briefly, we have the public officials liability, employment practices coverage, covering all of you and the town employees. We do have an accident policy, that's the one that's 800 a year, which covers the town's recreational activities, our part primarily. Someone gets hurt down there playing something, we can help them, at least to a small extent on this, which is a good thing, because generally it would eliminate maybe a larger claim later on. This $25,000 in medical and even accidental deaths, 10 of accidental death on this. We've never had a claim on this, which is good, but it does eliminate you getting involved in a tussle with somebody who gets hurt down there. And if you didn't have this, we have to determine if the town was liable or not. The answer is sometimes yes, sometimes no, right, depending on the situation. But there's ability to pay a smaller claim without any questions asked, and you can move on. It's a good product. And then finally, we do have the $300,000 bond for Melanie, all by herself, for dishonesty. And I'll review again with David the equipment, which we'll do, and the drivers.
Can you cover other towns?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that.
The answer is we do not. The only one we have at this time is Shatsbury.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a lot of schools, but at this time, Shatsbury is our only misspelled. Let me just review with you briefly, and feel free to ask any questions. We'd like to take a look at the claims, and this is a report about that. I yellowed in to help you understand this a little bit better, some things on here. Generally, the town's claims experience has been good. We talked about the workers' comp. We've had nothing in three years. We've had no property claims in the same period of time. If there's an area of moderate, I don't think it's major, moderate concern would be automobile. We have some stuff that happens, nothing really large, but for example, the first one there, we had a vehicle fire. This was back January of '15. And some of you may remember these a little better than I'm remembering them actually claimed.
That was the truck that caught fire in the paint shop?
That's right, the paint shop, right, yeah.
We didn't even own it, but I guess it was better to file through ours.
Right, because David was struggling mightily with the garage owner to try to get some satisfaction on this, so we decided to submit it and paid then, and the amount was actually not, what was paid to the town, the expense of the insurance company, it was at $3,600 was what it was to fix your damage on that. Hard to fault the town for that one, I agree. The next page, and that one, I guess, was a non-fault accident, and I was hoping David could remind us about that one too, which was back in January of '15. Again, not a huge number on that, $2,800, two years ago, January.
I can't remember what that is.
Yeah. Also, it was a hit-and-run, potentially, or parking lot accident. Next page, and look at the bottom of this one. The top is insignificant, a small thing there. This was a liability claim that we had back in April of last year, where the highway department was doing some digging, and they did dig up some Comcast cables.
Oh, okay.
Right. Again, that was in April of 2016. The amount was 5,000 on that. That would be a liability claim.
That was what they, the town group dug up a cable or something?
Yeah, it was cables that Comcast had in the ground, and boys were doing some rogue work, and they hit it.
Well, for it to be the town's fault, they must have not called Dixie then.
I must admit, I can't recall if the staff did it or not.
Because it's state law, if you're digging, you're supposed to call Dixie.
Right, yeah. My answer is I think they probably didn't call on that one.
Do we call when we're ditching and stuff like that?
It's state law, it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Because they're supposed to come and market, and you're supposed to give them, unless it's emergency, I think it's $48.
I bet we're not calling every time we clean out a ditch in our right-of-way.
No question.
We better be. Don't need too many of these. You remember my three-inch? You know that cable, you'll find out.
Guess we have, I put that down as an action item.
Yeah.
I never thought of that.
You never know what that stuff is.
But they do, they come right out to the edge of the road. They come right out to the telephone poles. They're usually buried from the telephone pole to the house.
Well, when they put them in, they tend to put them in with a plow. They'll go down with a dozer with a big reel in the back, and they just drag it, they just run up, right upside the road.
Yeah. So if we make our ditch a little bit more...
And they're supposed to put a tape over that. But most of them, instead of doing it the right way, they'll put the cable in, and lay the tape on top of it.
As opposed to a photoglass.
Yeah.
Which doesn't help you much when you're right on it.
Right.
They don't take long. They're back home.
Yeah, right.
Take one of them apart, it's a fact, you don't even know it.
Right.
I would think in general, they don't lay cable in our right-of-way, right?
Oh, yes, they do.
They do?
All the time.
Okay.
And finally, on the second-to-last page, we had a backup accident. This was in December of last year. $3200 on that. That was damage to the vehicle that was backed into. And we had, the most recent was May of this year. I think it might have been a load that shifted, right?
She was dumping it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Cut, carried over.
Right. And that was almost $8,000 on that one.
She has the same money as a claim for a windshield and the tenth of that one as well.
Right. Yeah, I highlighted just the larger ones here for you. One thing I'll get in touch with David on, the municipal program we have does offer some free-of-charge loss prevention services for you, for the town. And it's possible that David could rig up a training session or two for the folks, just reminding them regarding driving, safety, you know? And this certainly is not an extremely bad situation here, but there is some frequency here that we'd want to be focusing on a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk to David about that.
Yeah.
He'll open it up.
Right.
Seems like a defensive driving course for...
That's the idea, for commercial vehicles.
Commercial vehicles?
Yeah.
Does that give us a better discount on the insurance?
Well, the less claims you have, the better, of course, automatically, for sure.
Sure.
And I don't know if they actually have a discount for actually coming through with something, but I'll check that for...
I know the subDDC courses would offer, I guess, insurance companies would offer like up to 10%.
So feel free to ask questions, gentlemen, if you have any on this.
Yeah.
Do it again, I think, is what we're thinking.
Should we sort of go ahead and make a motion and all that sort of stuff, or is that part of that?
Well, we've got some details to get worked out here.
Right.
We're carrying the same policy along right now, and so you'll get with Dave and talk about equipment list and employees.
Right, the drivers.
And then we'll, you'll work out the details, and we'll vote on the final product.
There's a lot of upcoming changes. There's a lot of upcoming changes in the town.
Right.
Some minor changes, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah. You're thinking major changes?
Oh, well, I'm just with the town garage, the wiring.
Yeah, yeah, but the garage, again, it's going to be under the policy after this.
Yeah, and I'll get back to you on that, I mean, you finalize the budget right around the first of the year, right? Is that about right?
Finalize it around the first of the year, because we'll start talking about it in October.
Yeah, right, yeah. Get some info on that. Well, appreciate your time.
Well, you're welcome, we appreciate the coverage we get, we always have really good experience with you.
Well, this town, it's an emotional thing for me, this town. I like this town, yeah.
If we go to hiring plow contractors.
Right.
What would you recommend that we have, have for insurance coverage?
Well, they should show you two things, auto liability, obviously.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know that, I mean, what level?
I think they should have at least a million on that, at least.
Yeah.
And you might even suggest that they take a million umbrella over that, which is actually not that difficult to get, for guys that are experienced and pretty good at it.
No, most of them probably already got that, but I'm just...
Right, yeah. So I think you should ask for at least that.
Yeah.
A million plus a million, which we give for the general liability in the auto, yeah.
Okay.
I guess it's something you should look at, and there's some, we have some qualified guys in town who do commercial plowing, even though some of that, that probably still want to have the town employees involved in, at least for some of it, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, most of it, yeah, but for, we're, right now, we're looking at going to a crew of five.
Right, okay.
Where we've been at a crew of six.
Yeah.
Right now, we're at four, because we have three reason doctors. But with five, we'll have probably one supplemental.
Right.
In the winter, for plowing.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dave.
Keep on doing the hard work.
Okay, going on, I don't know what Dave had planned to tell us about dog licenses. As far as the garage update, I'm pretty sure that's just a placeholder we have on there for, for all the time, and I believe I already mentioned that the bond sale went through, and that we likely got the interest rate that we were expecting. So I don't have anything more to say about the garage, I was anxious to get over and see where the, the other house has been torn down over there. Haven't been there in a week or so.
The company who hired the architects, they did send over some questions, and we and Ken and I, along with the road crew, answered them, so that's moving along.
Okay, anything significant there?
No.
Just details?
Just little things like, how much apron do you want out in front of the truck? That sort of stuff.
Yeah. That takes us to a couple of items that I put on, hoping I would get to, and I did, do have a little bit to say about them. One of our tasks this year is to take a look at the town report. We did get the voters to approve us providing notice that the town report is available, instead of mailing it to everyone, which we will do. But we were also thinking that we, we might want to rethink some of the, the volume of stuff that we send out. I sent out something just yesterday, did anybody have a chance to look at that?
I did.
I didn't, I didn't.
I didn't.
Okay, let me bring that up and show you what I'm looking at, and I've got a paper copy of the town report. If you want to compare it to, come on. To what we have. And I'm really just looking at the table of contents here, but just even starting on the title page. It's got dates on it for business meeting, school meeting, balloting, that sort of thing. And I was kind of thinking this would be more of an informational idea, to put the phone number, website, address. And then, just jumping into the table of contents, what I was looking at generally was getting it down to current year information, and taking out a lot of the stuff that I think has just been padding in there for year after year. We have helpful numbers at the start, that include all kinds of numbers that you can get in directory assistance, all kinds of numbers all through Cole Hall, which really are relevant now that with the new phone system, you have one phone number, that's really all you need. I don't know that we need to take up space putting Dick Sears' phone number and Alice's phone number in there, those, that people can get those, is my thought on those. But just taking kind of a, a big hack at it, taking out just the listing of officers that are in there, of town officers. I'm reminding myself here too. Yeah, just, you know, that these are the town officers. The meetings from last year's, the minutes from last year's town meeting, school and, and town meeting. You know, at this, I don't think anybody's going to go back and read those a year later. Election results from a year ago, those kind of things, I've taken out.
Are the minutes from last year's town meeting voted on, are they approved at the following year's town meeting, or do they not go through that, like what we just do?
No, we approve those as, like we approve regular meeting minutes. Yeah, like first meeting in April, we'll approve those minutes.
Okay, so it's a term that's not approved. Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a lot of what I've done here is essentially just taking out columns of numbers, the 500-line spreadsheet that we, we published, the treasures report, a lot of it is, you know, in-and-out balance of all the funds that we have, those kind of things, I don't think they, they need to go into the town report. And really get it down to, you know, basically the reports from the officers in the town. A couple of these, I wanted to suggest we take out, let's see, where are they? Vermont Department of Health sends us a report, which is just describing what the Vermont Department of Health is. Another thing I was going to suggest is that we get, we publish the informational reports from all of the community appropriations, where they write, write back and tell us, as part of their asking to be on the ballot for funding each year, they tell us what they've done in Shasberry. I was thinking that that could be packaged as a separate thing, that it's, it's a lot of paper, and a lot of people, I think they're not going to care about that, and instead of adding it to it, just include it as a separate, a separate document, you want the town report, do you want the report from the community appropriations as well, we'll send them to you, kind of thing. And of course, all of this will be online.
I was gonna say, everything online.
Everything's going to be online, yeah. But just going through, you know, with a, with a machete like that, and essentially just taking out where we've got columns of numbers that we've been publishing, I got it down from 103 to the 26 pages of the report, which is mostly the report from the officers, and then another 27 pages for the 27 community appropriations, and I could say, put that in a separate document if people want that, they can ask for it or access it online.
So what's required by law?
What's required by law is the auditor's report. And I was going to suggest that we, of course, include that, but also move it to the front of the section of reports, since it's the one that's required by law, and go ahead and include the, a statement of the statute that makes it required by law. And like I say, this is, and then, the other thing that I was thinking about is, when we send out the notice that the report is available, I think we have a couple of options there, we can send a postcard like the SDSU does, and say, our report's available, you can get it online, or we'll send you a copy. Or we could think about maybe a one-page summary, or some sort of really small, one-page trifold kind of thing, that's, you know, got maybe a couple of charts on the budget or something like that, that provides some information. I haven't decided if, if I like that idea or not, but it's something that's worth considering, instead of just, you know, town report's available.
My gut reaction is just go the simple way.
Just a postcard?
Just a postcard, because, I don't know, I just, where do you stop? And if some people see that, they think that that's all the report they're going to get, even though it says plainly on there, it's just part of that, I prefer just to go with the...
Okay. Certainly simpler going that way.
Don't forget some pushback from people about their expectations.
Yeah. Well, the thing to keep in mind is that all of these things that we're taking out, like the 500-line spreadsheet budget and all of that, they're public documents, they're available upon request anytime anybody wants them. I'm just thinking that not very many people are going to want them, and that they're, we're better served giving them to people upon individual request, rather than printing them up on glossy paper and spending $5,000 a year sending them to 1,500 households. And again, you know, most, lot, more and more people are getting stuff online, and all of this will...
I was gonna say, it's all available online.
I mean, to me, I live online more than I live in paper, and I keep forgetting that I have, when I go to get the town report, I have, I forget how to find it, because it's on my coffee table and not on my computer.
Well, the problem is that it's a generational thing. So you have to wait, I mean, because there are people who read this cover to cover. And read all of the information, look for clerical errors. Births and weddings and who hasn't paid their taxes. Exactly, exactly. So just be aware of that, that it is a public document that many people for generations have looked upon as a bible. You know, those numbers, you know, I know people who have them listed waiting right by the phone, although, you know, less people have landlines now than ever, but still, yeah.
It's absolutely true.
Yeah.
We just got to be aware.
Yeah, yeah, and just, I, you know, I would continue to talk about this, and then see what kind of feedback we get.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and keep in mind that, you know, the people that want the paper, they get it, all they have to do is call and ask it, and we'll send it to them, no charge.
It may not have as much stuff as what they've had in the past, just that should be warned.
Basically, we're saying we'll take out the columns of numbers that were there before. The reports, the text reports will largely stay intact, but it's the Excel spreadsheets that we included before, about 50 pages worth that we'd be taking out. And that's just, you know, essentially taking, like I say, a machete to the town report we have. We should probably all be thinking about, you know, is there, is there a better format in general for the town report? What information should the town be providing to people on an annual basis? Is it, is it different from, from this? And that's a harder question, but one we ought to be thinking about. You know, are we, are we informing people in the best way about what's going on in the town government with this kind of report, or is there, is there a better format, other information that would be more helpful?
Well, I think, again, we need feedback from people. What do they want? And it's true, we could do like some kind of survey, figure out how many people are now switching to the website to check information. You know, I do that now all the time.
But a lot of people do like to have something tangible.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my point, yeah, yeah. And it's that transition, because it's certainly generation, absolutely.
It must be old, because I still like to have one too.
And other certain things that I print out, because I need to have a paper copy of them. Yeah.
Well, I think we will get some information on that in this next go-around, and see how many people request the town report come to them.
Yeah.
All right, any more comments on that? Town website, I really have less, presented a report a while back about some of the, my thoughts on reorganizing the town website, and I asked Michael Chianowski, who's one of our planning commissioners, who's trying to teach himself to do web design, to sort of put some, some ideas together, and he and I talked for a little while today, and I'm almost reluctant to show this, because this is not really what we're talking about, but it's kind of in the direction we're going, which is simpler design, certainly, I immediately suggested that I don't want a third of the page to be a logo, I want to get into information right away, so that the town logo would be off in a corner somewhere. But again, trimming it down, fewer columns, and this is just the first four buttons that he programmed in, in terms of putting a lot of individual quick links here at the top that would take people to, you know, hours of operation, documents, things like that, that they might want to jump to. So really, all I want to say is that we're still, we're still working on that website design. Okay, well, we're up to other business, does anyone have any other business they want to bring up this evening? No? Action items, I caught three things, we want to schedule the Bennington Rescue Squad for, I wrote, oh, today I wrote that we needed to do it on 8/21, but we found out that two of us are going to be missing, so we're going to go ahead and push that into September. Oh, there it is on my next line, okay, right. And then have Dave check and see about the call-before-you-dig issue that Ken brought up.
I'd like to add one other thing, I'm still puzzled, does, if a person, if, if the town approves a community appropriation, is that automatically sent to the party or the group that asked for it, or do they have to, or do they have to ask for it and be sent? I'm wondering why Arlington's was, just went out.
Yeah.
I think we've asked that question before.
Yeah, I think we pay it automatically, and I think we pay it toward the end of the year, and I think, I suspect what happened is that most of them, or a lot of them are under $1,000, so that they may have been on some previous warrants without us actually reading them out loud.
Okay. I still would like to know whether, how it's handled. It's September 6 o'clock. I know that. That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so that's all I caught.
Okay.
In the way of action items. I'm not going to review them, because I really need Dave here to, to get updates on. And then we had an executive session planned to discuss public work staffing, we're going to postpone that, because we really need Dave to, to be in on that. Any other?
What are we, what are we going to do with town, the checking out Dixie? What are we, what are we going to do with town, the checking out Dixie before they, are we going to make that a standing order or what? We don't need any more of that stuff.
Well, if it's a state law that you're supposed to dig, call before you dig, then that's the answer. We better make sure we're doing it.
Somebody did, because $5,000 dollar bill there.
Yeah, I don't know what the details are there, but yeah, let's make sure we are doing that, we're supposed to be, and, you know, why that, why we ended up paying a claim on
I mean, if, if we call, and it's recorded, because you have to, you know, you're going to dig number and everything else. If we call, and it's recorded, and they don't find it, and we dig it out, we're not responsible. But if you get into one of them fiber-wrapped cables, you don't want to think what it's going to cost.
Okay. All right, yeah, we'll, we'll need to find out that, and yeah, if, I mean, if it's a state law, we don't have to do anything. We need to be doing it. We need to make sure that, that it's being done.
I don't know why we never saw this before.
Yeah, my guess is that we do do that as a matter of course, and we don't know the details of why we had to pay that. Maybe we forgot to call that day, or there were some other extenuating circumstances, but--
So I, I had one in Bennington, and I hit it, and I had called before, and I called it again after I hit it. It was a two-inch telephone, under a buried telephone cable. And they, oh, there's nothing there. And I had to go through a sore light, so I cut it apart with a check, with a cut-off saw. I said, it's going to be gone, and it was. Never heard anything.
Okay. All right, we'll check on that. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
So we stand adjourned at 7:00?